Six thirty. We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our February first Select Board meeting. That's an interesting video. Did you see that? It looked like the little, the figures are moving ninety miles an hour. It's like fast motion. Is that, do, are we really moving?
Yeah, why, why is that happening? I'm seeing the same thing at home.
Yeah, it's just something with Sappus cameras.
Oh, okay.
That's scary.
Distracting.
I'm thinking, why, why? That's like a cartoon or something.
Too much coffee.
No, it's, it's actually sleepy time tea. Uh, the first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our January eighteenth Select Board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the January twenty, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Twenty twenty-three. Uh, any changes, corrections, errors, omissions, anything?
I had a couple of questions on line eight of the first page. Uh, first name is Quincy George Emerson. Should that be Emerson?
Emerson.
Okay. Then...
Anything else?
Well, I was gonna make a comment about one of the things that you said on, as a plumber, you were talking about flushing things out. And it should, should be flushing things out, but I don't want to change what you said.
Where, where was that?
That was pretty funny. Um, there was one, it was, we were talking about, um, I don't remember, line twenty-five on page four, and line thirty-four, page three. I, I just got a chuckle out of that. I thought I'd bring it up.
Oh, okay. I thought you, you were gonna correct something that I...
No, 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 it's fine. It's just plumber talk.
Okay. It's hard to get out of it sometimes.
Right. I think that was all I had.
Anybody else have anything, anything on them?
I did not.
All those in favor of approving the minutes with the correction, uh, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Citizens comments? If there was someone here that would like to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Does anybody have any citizens comments? Moving right along, old business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can, just a couple things.
That's tough.
The signage for Brookside was supposed to have been brought in, uh, um, Monday or Tuesday. It's probably downstairs. I haven't been here, so, um...
Yeah, they're in the room next door.
Okay, great.
So many.
Um, so, those will be getting put up. Uh, we are hoping that the official grand opening, although the trail is getting used heavily, the official opening will be at Winter Carnival. Uh, we thought would be a great time. The Chester Conservation Group will be doing guided nighttime snowshoe hike there, so, um, a good time to do kind of an official opening of the trail. Um, and we'll have the signs up as best we can for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're probably gonna lean them against something. This time of year, it might not be easy digging.
But we'll get them, we'll get them so they're in the general vicinity.
Yeah.
So, um, the only other real item is the Canal Street survey. Um, so, I, I gave you in your packet some communication from the, um, surveyor, as well as one of the butters. Um, there is some disagreement, um, in the surveys. Um, and it, it's a bit of both sides are right type of situation going on there. Um, so, really feeling like this is not a decision that I should be making, but it really is more of a board decision, um, as far as what we want to do. It is not really usable land for the town. Um, you know, so, you know, Gary's kind of thought was, I don't know how much fighting I would do over this. So, uh, maybe it's just coming up with an agreement of a mutual point, and Mr. Aldridge, um, had expressed that as well. So, uh, next meeting, doing a site visit at five PM, um, so that you guys can kind of see it. Gary can show you on the ground what exactly is happening. Um, and then have discussion, obviously, at the meeting to follow, and the board can kind of make a decision on what, what he feels his next steps should be on that. Uh, so that will be coming up at your next meeting. And that's it for old business.
Uh, I see the, the note you had in there regarding the community gardens. They just heard back from their attorney, and they're having a meeting, uh, this coming Tuesday. So they'll have, uh...
Have an update coming.
They'll have some more, uh, discussion afterwards.
Sure.
Anybody else have anything on old business? Moving on, we'll, uh, we have our wastewater asset management plan. The loan documents for that. Do we need the motions for that?
You do need a motion for that.
We need a, a motion for the Vermont State Revolving Fund for the, uh, loan amount of seventy-eight thousand. And I think what, half of that is a...
Once the project is completed, um, once the project is completed, uh, fifty percent of that is forgiven. Uh, so what we will be paying back is the balance of thirty-nine thousand. We can certainly discuss then whether we borrow that, or there is certainly a healthy reserve fund in sewer. Um, doesn't seem to make any sense to pay interest when we've got it sitting in an account. So, uh, we can certainly talk at that point about what we want to do.
I'll make a motion to sign the document as written. Second.
Ben's the, uh, motion, and Lee Gustafson's the second. Any further discussion on it? I mean, we've been talking about this for a while, working on it, and it's... It'll help for future grants and things that we would apply for in the future when it comes to it.
Absolutely.
Knowing what we have and just being shovel, not shovel ready, but having the documents ready for anything that might come up.
So the first document, um, is, is only, you need to sign our name?
Yeah.
But then there are other documents that the whole board cites. You want to sign that one. That's the loan. Sorry, I know it goes with this. I'm handing you just a blank signature page. It goes with this.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
Um, oh, you need to vote on your motion. Yes.
All those in favor of the motion as stated?
Aye.
Aye.
All signed.
I am not able to come down to the town hall to do any signatures.
Here finally, we've got three. That'll be...
Okay, excellent. When you said whole board, I kind of went, oops.
No, no, totally fine.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Ben.
You're welcome.
Here's the other one, Mr. Signature.
It's the cold there. And then every once in a while, I look up at that video up there, and it's really annoying.
Sorry, that goes with the resolution. I sent just the signature page. Would you like the document that it goes with?
I could read it before you sign it. You don't know what you're signing.
I've read it.
I promise you it goes with that. Trust me enough to know it's not going somewhere.
They're all good. Want these back right now?
If I could, because they're in order.
Yeah, those are...
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda are bond documents for paving and capital purchases.
We also need motions for these?
Correct.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we sign the Declaration of Official Intent to reimburse certain expenditures from proceeds of indebtedness.
I'll second.
Lee Gustafson's the motion, and Lee Decker's the second. And this one is for the tune of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
No, it's four fifty-seven. That was the one I...
There's two. There's two.
Oh, okay.
You have two separate groupings.
Four fifty-seven is the one that you just made the motion on?
Capital purchases was why I made the motion on.
And that's for the purchase of an ambulance, a dump truck.
That's it.
Yeah, that was two items. All those in favor of the, uh, motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? So that was...
There's nothing to sign.
Nothing to sign on that one, and the next one is the resolution for, uh, funds to complete the construction of Route Thirty-five of Culvert Placement on Green Mountain Turnpike and paving Andover Road at an aggregate estimated cost of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution certificate in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Second.
Lee's the motion, and Ben is the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 We might be on it here by seven.
Great.
Well, and just to clarify, I, you know, the reason there are two bonds is paving, we always do as a bond, so that would remain. The other items, the two capital purchases, right now, bond rates, interest rates are much better than going through a commercial lender. So, if that is still the case come May, when bond applications are due, um, then this gives me the ability to go after bonds. Um, if commercial interest rates are less, then we'll go after it.
Great. Be prepared either way.
Yes, then we're just, we're just covered.
Next item on the agenda is the solar field appraisal. I think everybody got the, uh, appraisal that came in a little bit ago. And, uh, the numbers on it were very, on a positive side for sure, considering what Green Lantern or Greenbacker is, is the owner of the solar, uh, field at this point.
It came separately than the packet, so I wouldn't know.
So where do we go next on this, Julie? Do we end up having to take it to our attorney to take a look at it all?
I think your next step is, remember, this was an independent appraisal, and the number is very different than, uh, the number proposed by Greenbacker. So, I think your next step is this needs to be presented to Greenbacker as the value reached by the independent appraiser. Um, they will likely come back with something. I, I don't know what their response will be, but I think we need to wait for that. I will certainly go ahead and put Jim in, um, you know, kind of on notice that we'll be coming, uh, potentially. Um, and, you know, get him digging out the contract and all of that. There's a lot of legal pieces we're gonna need to work through as there are two other off-takers of this same site, so how does that work? And then the ability to do a financial analysis to determine, is it better for us to be landlord, or is it better for us to buy the mountain and use a hundred percent of the power for ourselves? So, um, those will be the next steps that I see, but I think the very immediate step is getting it to Greenbacker.
See what their take on...
This number is significantly less, less than half, more than half.
Were they around three million?
They were at two point five.
Two point four, I think.
Two point four?
Two point four.
And this is coming in just over...
This is one point one. And the initial amount that was on the original document was nine hundred thousand, or somewhere thereabouts.
Yeah, yeah. So this number is more in keeping with their original thought than they came to us with two point four. So this is significantly less, obviously. Um, so I think that's the next step.
What is the, are we in any of those time constraints that we talked about previously?
I think we're still, restarted the process, um, so I think we're still okay. Because we initiated it. There was no way to get an appraiser within thirty days. And they were, and, and Greenbacker was also part of the process of trying to find somebody. Um, so we certainly have demonstrated effort, so...
Ben.
I don't, when I, when I looked at that paragraph about the, uh, the buyout and stuff, it did talk about the original timeframe, but after, once you initiated the process, it didn't have anything else after that. So once you started it, you were okay with it from there. It'll be interesting, besides what you stated, to see exactly how it all works as far as the finances that go in it and stuff, because some of the old information that I dug up and stuff talked about ninety percent to the service provider, we benefit ten percent. So if we become the service provider, do we get that whole hundred percent on our take? And do we get the ninety percent of the other off-takers also, since we're the ones that are responsible for the place and owned the place at that time? And there's a big difference on that, because the original, one of the original calculations that they had was a savings of around seventy or eighty thousand dollars for Chester, off-taking around thirty or thirty-five percent. And we would get ten percent of the benefit from it, which was seven or eight thousand dollars. If we were at a hundred percent and we owned it, if that's how it works, would be up that, to that seventy or eighty thousand just on our end for that one off-take. Then you still have another sixty percent left. Ninety percent of that sixty percent would be quite a piece of change, if that's how it works, but I'm not sure the attorneys would, they would know how all this net metering stuff works and all the details that go with it, and as far as, uh, the other people that are involved, before we, you know, do too much to make sure.
Well, and I think we start that with Jim, and it may be that we bring in Ron. Maybe that we bring in our auditing firm. Um, they have a, a whole entity to them that is not just auditing, but does all levels of accounting practice. So we could start with the attorneys, and then if we need to bring in our CPAs, we could... I, I could see it, I could see them needing to do, this financial analysis is way beyond my abilities. So, we would need to bring in somebody, but we, I think we start with Jim. And then maybe go to, maybe go to our accountant.
I was, I was gonna suggest that in addition to the attorneys having a CPA or somebody who knows the financial and tax implications of it, looking at it, because, yeah, like you said, it's pretty complicated, and the rules can be very specific as far as how you meet them and all that stuff, so, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, on the face of it, it looks like it would, it might be a really good opportunity, depending on, you know, the legalese, like you were saying.
Right.
And the details on how it all works and stuff.
Yeah.
But, uh, that they threw out that nice high number on it kind of makes you think that, well, maybe that's what they think it's worth.
Yeah.
When you start adding all these numbers together, because we're, some of these numbers we're looking at is just are part of it, which is only a small part of the picture.
Right.
Never mind, I mean, it's, it's the town of Pittsford, I think it is, and St. Johnsbury Academy. They're another two off-takers. And St. Johnsbury Academy, I think, is the bigger one. It's like forty percent or somewhere thereabouts.
They take the largest percentage.
But they also have the same offer for those towns.
They have the exact same contract that we do, which is where, which is where Jim's gonna need to come into play. So, clearly, there must need to be new contracts written. Um, and do their rights of purchase go away? Like, I, I just don't know how all that works, because within our contract is the option to purchase at seven fifteen and the end of life. So, do, do they retain the right to purchase to, from us at fifteen? Like, I just don't know how all that's gonna continue if you have three off-takers with the exact same contract.
With the same rights.
With the same right, if they are identical contracts. So I'm assuming that there is a rewriting of a contract, a notification that must go out to them, letting them know it's been purchased, and reissuing of contracts where those terms all then change, and, but I don't know.
Julie, do you know, because Greenbacker is not the same as Green Lantern, is not the same as Grow Solar, or it's a, you know, Chester Solar, or whatever it is. So theoretically, the property's already changed hands a couple of times, or at least the project has changed hands a couple of times.
Right.
So, does that mean whoever bought it just bought it contract lock, stock, and barrel, and, and didn't make any changes, or were there renegotiations?
There were not renegotiations. So I might have...
Not on our end.
Not on our end. So it went from Green Lantern built it, and then it immediately changed hands to Greenbacker, and there is a connection there. It's like one corporation into another subcorporation. They're all part of the same group. Um, is my understanding. There's probably a corporation that does the development and a corporation that does the management, is my, what I'm thinking probably happens. So this would be completely separate. This is being purchased outside of...
Right, right, no. I think Bill had a question.
Up to, up to the mic, Bill, and introduce yourself.
Yeah, Bill Lindsey. Uh, our current field, the land, I'm speaking of only, do we own sufficient land at the moment that if we went forward, either purchase, whichever way was decided, that we could expand that field? In other words, is, and what would be the current depreciation on what we currently have? Because everything depreciates. And so, would, uh, we do some homework and try to answer both of those questions. One, because if we could expand the field, our revenue, depending which way we went, would be greater. Uh, but I think I, that's something the taxpayer would like to know. Because I think a lot of people, there was reluctance when there was discussion about solar originally, uh, but I think that's like TV antennas. It's over. You know what I'm saying? I mean, people are accepting it now, and it's, it's a matter of, gee, I wish you could put solar at my house. We'll be, I don't want to look at the ugly panels. So I think there's a public acceptance, so I think whatever information we could get, whatever decision the board makes, would help to sell the project. Thank you.
But just, I think I can answer one of your questions, Bill, and I think there's sufficient property there to expand. Yeah, I'd have to look at the flood plains and whether that would be an, uh, an issue, but certainly enough property to put up a bunch more solar. And then as far as your other question about, um, spacing it now.
Depreciation.
Oh, depreciation. That's probably already gone. They probably already took all depreciation of the equipment, if that's what you're...
And then sometimes, if a new owner becomes, he's entitled to taking depreciation based on the asset value that he bought.
Uh, that may be. I, I know that for most solar projects, the, the specific equipment is what's depreciated. It's not depending, it doesn't depend on who owns it. But that's a good question for somebody that knows a lot more than I do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, overall, I just, I raise these questions because could make a decision to go forward, whatever the board decides.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we, we got a little more homework to do on our end to get some more...
Sean.
Sean, you have your hand up?
Or, that's Tim, that's Tim Roper.
Oh, is it?
I have my hand up.
Is it, Tim, is it you, Tim?
Yes, I have my hand up. Just a, a quick comment, um, in response to Bill's questions. The array there was built with a certificate of public good issued by the Public Service Department to interconnect that amount of solar to the grid. So to expand that, uh, array, you wouldn't be able to expand that array. You might be able to add another one, but you would have to go to the, uh, Public Service Commission to get a certificate of public good and get an agreement with Green Mountain Power in order to interconnect that. Hopefully that helps a little bit.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, this, this conversation started back in twenty fourteen when we, when it was first presented by, uh, Green Lantern. And you're right, Bill, there, there was some skepticism in the beginning about even, even having the conversation, never mind doing the project and stuff. Yeah, it's definitely more accepted. Well, we'll keep everybody informed as we go along and let everybody know what's happening. Any other discussion or comments regarding the, uh, solar field?
I thought the auditor did a great job with, or the appraiser did a great job with the documentation and presenting everything. It was very well done.
Yeah, it spelled out all the old things that were in there. The contract was even in there, too. It was hard to read that little thing, but it definitely helped.
And somebody took some really nice pictures.
Any other comments, any other questions? Future agenda items, new business. Anybody have any suggestions or any desires for future agenda items or new business?
Site visit at the Canal Street.
Weather permitting? I mean, if we have a blizzard out there, we're not gonna...
Yeah, we have a blizzard, yeah, but if it's, you know, a little drizzle and a few flakes.
And if it's a little cold, maybe not.
Depends on who shows up about the flakes part, right?
Uh, we'll have, uh, the police advisory.
Yes, Tom and I are hoping that we'll have everything ready for presentation at that next meeting.
All right.
Yeah, at least some framework to start with, yeah.
And I know a while ago, we talked about, uh, the Academy Building and maybe getting a group together to start a discussion on that building to see, throw ideas out there, or get people together, or whatever, and I'm wondering...
There is a grant that is getting ready to open up, uh, and opening up after town meeting, um, where it, it's in partnership with Efficiency Vermont, I believe, that will do free of charge energy assessments for municipal buildings. So Steve and I are talking about, number one, the Academy Building, um, and number two, the library. And then, um, then there is a grant that will follow that. So if you have an agenda, one of these energy assessments done, then it is a up to five hundred thousand dollar grant per building in a municipality to make those energy improvements. So it would be a great way to get some stuff accomplished at the library that we want done. Um, but we're thinking the Academy Building. Maybe a great way to start some interior work on that building. Um, you know, it's not open all the time, but I think we can make the argument that we're getting it to that point. Um, uh, so that, that's one of the buildings that we're, we're really hoping to get. And it's certainly in the state system. It's gotten a number of grants through historic preservation. Um, we're hoping that'll make it a really good candidate, um, for some work to be done.
So would it help to have a vision or an idea for the use of the building before you went to have grants like this, or do you think it makes any difference on a grant?
I, I think we could certainly, what I would like to do, that grant itself will probably open up about May. So I feel like it gives us enough time to at least establish a group, um, because we can say with, at least we can say within the application, you know, we, we have a reuse committee that has, that has been formed, that's really doing planning, um, you know, for opening this building for whatever purpose, visitor center, or whatever we're gonna talk about, right? So, um, uh, yeah, yeah. So my, what I would like to do is get the energy assessment, and I think we can make the case that, that this is a good building for that. Um, and then that gives us time to kind of get something in place. I'm, I'm not sure, there's really very little information about what the grant itself is gonna require. Uh, we just know that what has been allocated is five hundred thousand.
Yep. Without the details quite yet.
Correct. Five hundred thousand per, potentially per building. Library is not gonna take five hundred thousand for energy upgrades, but, you know, we, we could, we could drop a good fifty to eighty in there with some stuff that we would like to do, that Steve would like to do. So, um, you know, it would certainly help with that, too.
And the Academy Building is a, uh, blank slate.
Exactly. So if we had to choose between the two, we would go the Academy Building, and we'd do the library through the capital plan. Um, but we would hit the Academy Building, because we could easily drop five hundred grand at the Academy Building for energy, energy upgrades.
Well, it's got a sound shell at this point.
Exactly, exactly.
All the windows have been done, the roof's done. So the outside is hanging in there.
Yep.
So I just wanted to jump off of something that, um, we were talking about a little bit earlier, and that's the, the thing that Tom and Julie are gonna do. I just wanted to, um, express my appreciation for our public service personnel and, and departments. We had a meeting of the Chester Business Coalition on Monday, and all of the department had showed up, and it was a great, uh, discussion, presentation by the three leaders of those three groups. And I heard many, many comments after they were done about how fortunate we are as a town to have those departments working together to protect the citizens of Chester. And I just wanted to give a shout out to those guys, men and women, for what they do and how fortunate we really are to have a group of dedicated personnel, um, volunteers and otherwise, to keep us safe. So I wanted to make that a public statement.
Thank you, Lee. I really appreciate hearing that.
Yeah.
And I know from their perspective, you know, having the building that the taxpayers provided them was a big, um...
That was a big incentive.
It was a big incentive to them. It, it has rejuvenated them all. We have added a, a lot of new members to different things. We have added a, a lot of new members to different things. They have a lot of pride in that building and I know are all very thankful to the taxpayers for that.
Yes.
And are really merging back like they used to be.
Yeah.
Merging back to a public safety division, not just police, fire, ambulance, but as one unit. So we are very lucky, very lucky, very fortunate.
Yep.
Backbone of our community.
Yep.
Yeah. And I, I really, I agree with you that that building was kind of the catalyst that got us back into the, where we are. So appreciate all the taxpayers being willing to fund it.
Yep.
Anything else for future agenda items? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for our yearly town manager review. Second. Lee is the motion and Ben is the second. Any discussion on it? All those in favor of entering executive session, purpose of reviewing our town manager, please say aye.
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 Okay. Can I go?